I call this meeting to order for Tuesday, December 6, 2022. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Susan Payne.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Sharon McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Josh Riden.
Here.
Commissioner Stephen Burnett.
Here.
Commissioner Carl Melton.
Here.
Commissioner Nick Paul.
Here.
And Brian Caesar is not here, so the Assistant City Manager Hernandez.
Here.
City Attorney Ashley Smith.
Here.
The clerk is present. Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Rachel. We are going to start with the invocation given by Pastor Matt Saloria of Bethel Baptist Church, and the pledge led by Mayor Protem Wright.
We just found out.
Father, we thank you for the season that we're entering into, this time of Christmas. Lord, we thank you for the gospel, the good news that was proclaimed the very first night when the angels sang "Good News of Great Joy." Father, we are so privileged to be able to share the good news ourselves and to go and to spread abroad the message of peace on earth and goodwill toward men through your Son, Jesus Christ. Father, we thank you for living in a country where we have the freedom to pray in a meeting like this, and, Lord, to understand that all the affairs of men, the governments of this world, Lord, are underneath the sovereignty of your sovereignty, Father. So, God, we thank you for those that are serving our city, representing those who live here in Alamogordo, and, Lord, we thank you for the work that they do, the time they put into it. Lord, we pray your blessing on everyone that is here tonight. Lord, as we're busy with our own affairs, Father, I pray that we would seek first the Kingdom of God and your righteousness. Lord, we thank you for the promise of your Son, Jesus Christ, that was fulfilled the very first Christmas, and that on his shoulders is the government. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Matt. I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move on to the approval of the agenda. I know City Clerk Rachel Hughes wanted to pull item five off of the consent agenda. Does anybody else have anything? And I know I said that a little early, but I know that I did that. But does anybody else have anything, or do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Move, okay. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Wright. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Riden. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion passes seven zero. We are going to move on to presentations. We have two tonight. The first one is a presentation by a familiar face, Ms. Nadia Sykes, and Peg Cram, President of 100% Otero, and they're going to talk to us about the point-in-time count funding request through 100% Otero.
Good evening.
Hello.
Mayor and commissioners, audience, thanks for coming out tonight and giving me a chance to talk. I'm one of the co-founders of 100% Otero, as is Lisa Yale, the other co-founder. And we are here to... Well, first, let me tell you, 100% Otero is a local nonprofit, and our goal is to eliminate childhood trauma in Otero County. We want all of our kids to grow up in a safe and healthy environment so they can grow up to be responsible and productive adults. So, that's an easy mission, right? Okay. We're taking care of that. But how do we do that? We do that by ensuring that all families have access to the 10 vital services that they need to be successful. The 10 services are food, housing, medical and dental care, behavioral health care, transportation, parent supports, early childhood learning, community schools, youth mentoring, and job training. So, we work on making all those areas accessible to all our families in Otero County. But tonight, I'm here just to talk about one of them, and that is housing. And for full disclosure, I am here to ask for money. So, just a small amount, but we are here to ask for money. We've all seen people who are experiencing homelessness. As you drive around town, you see them, and we know that it is happening in our community. But do we know how many folks it affects? Do we know where they're from? Do we know how old they are? What caused them to fall into homelessness? What could help them get out? Things like that. Why is it important that we know the data, the who, what, where, why, when? Well, I'm going to give you a couple of reasons it's important. One is HUD, Housing and Urban Development. It's their mandate to... That we all count the homeless people every year. That's one thing. But more close to home, if we want to solve a problem, we have to know what the problem is. And so, we need the data to define what that problem is, and then we need data over time to see if any actions we... Ooh, sorry. Any actions we put into place make a difference. Are we helping people? Are we not? We need the numbers. We need the data to prove it. The other thing is, there is funding out there to work on the homeless issue. There's government funding, there's foundations, all sorts of things. But the first step to be eligible to get that funding is you have to know what your problem is. You have to have the data from what's called the PIT count, or Point-in-Time Count. So, this is just like the U.S. Census. You know, a couple of years ago, we were encouraging everybody to respond to the census so that we had the numbers, so that you could get the funding. And what we needed for our community, this is the same thing. We need to have the numbers, we need to have the data, so we know what we can ask. But we need more data to figure it out. If we want good data, we need to... We have... Need a greater level of organization and coordination to get those good numbers and do some comprehensive surveying. So, that's why I'm here today to ask you for some support, so that we can do a good count, and we would be doing this year after year, so that we can follow the trends and see how we're doing. So, this year's count, PIT count, is for the night of Monday, January 30. And so, for several days after that, individuals can be surveyed. If they spent the night of January 30 in a place not meant for human habitation, they are counted as homeless, and then we ask additional questions to learn more. 100% Otero is willing to lead this effort, and we've estimated that the cost is about $2,700 to do that. We are asking you for half of it and Otero County for the other half. At the end, we will deliver to you a report. Put it in your hands, so you can see all the data that we've gathered, and you can use that in your planning and decision-making. So, I thank you for listening. I appreciate your consideration, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
So, I do. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is that... Okay. All right. When... And maybe I just missed it. I just... I'm sorry. In full disclosure, I just got a text saying our YouTube feed was gone, so I was trying to fix that. When... When do they want to do the PIT count?
It has to be for the night of January 30, and then we have, I think it's four days afterwards that we can interview people.
Okay.
Four or five days.
Okay. Yeah, and just so everybody knows, last year when they did the PIT... I think it was last year when they did the PIT count, they picked the worst possible day of the year to do it, and they can't pick it. It's picked by somebody else. But it was the worst possible day of the year to do it, because it was absolutely freezing that night, and you were not going to find... It was freezing that week. I mean, okay, it's cold in the winter, but it was outrageously cold, and I believe... I think Anthony...
Yeah, we work with Anthony Torres, Pastor Torres.
Torres, yes. Anthony Torres opened up his church at the time, and so it was really difficult to get a good count at that particular time, because... Yeah, and several of the nonprofits help with that count as well.
And volunteers, yes.
But it was just a bad week, so that's why I was asking, and I don't even know... I don't know if January 30th will be better or not. It's really... It's really hard to say, and it's unfortunate, because it really is very important to our community that we get a good count. We don't necessarily see... I mean, I think we're seeing more and more homeless people. I'm counting every entrance to Walmart at this point, but we don't necessarily see it, but they're there, and we can't fix the problem, truly fix the problem, not put a Band-Aid on it and give people money and hotels and that kind of thing. Not that, but truly fix the problem if we can't get an accurate count. So, unfortunately, there's not a lot we can do about that date. But anyway, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, this was not an action item, right? It was just a presentation, so there's nothing we can do tonight about it. But I think... Would we bring it back, or what would we do?
So, your direction is for us, if you would like for us to work with them, to look to get the money, and then it'll come back as an item for you.
Okay. And you said it was a total of $2,700?
Yes.
So, like $1,300, $1,350 each?
Yes.
Okay.
And we haven't heard yet from Otero County, so we're working with them, too.
Okay. So, is that... Do we want to explore the idea, or how does everybody feel about it? I... Yeah, I personally support it, because I think it's important. It really is important for our community. We are not going to fix this problem, and I can just tell you from personal experience that this problem is getting worse and worse and worse, and if we really want to fix it, then we need to do exactly what they said, and we need to take a critical look at it. Otherwise, we're just kicking the can down the road, so... Okay, all right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be to work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
And we'll be in contact.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm just grabbing a banner.
Oh. I'm sure it's a lovely banner.
Kicking the can down the road, so...
I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner."
Okay. All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
And we'll be in contact.
I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation. I'm sure it's a lovely banner.
Kicking the can down the road.
I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner."
Okay. All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road.
I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner."
All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Very good. But we are going to move on to our next presentation.
I'm sure it's a lovely banner. Kicking the can down the road. I said, "I'm sure it's a lovely banner." All right. So, I guess that would be the direction, would be...
No.
To work with our city staff and see what we can come up with?
I will be in contact.
How are you? I'm pretty familiar with it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I went and got a piece of wood, and there were 39 calls. In a year and a half, family got a big deal, and they had a big time to spend. I was trying to... I was trying to... I was trying to fight on the law. 39 calls, that's what. They stopped me at the outdoor, and I tried to... I went to... I was trying to... I was trying to... I was trying to... I went to... I was trying to... I was trying to... I was trying to... I went to... I was trying 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 to... I do know that the two boards is building up, that the two boards to send a bill to the owner to pay for the cost of boarding this building up. I was unable to find out who was supposed to spend that bill, or even if that bill was sent. But I do know that much after I first spoke to the city attorney, I came down to get an update and found out absolutely nothing had been done. Nothing. Now, I understand that there are procedures that this city must follow when they are condemning a building or taking... Seizing the land for whatever reason, but they're not being followed. Not even the beginning steps have been followed to take care of this piece of property, which is now affecting our property values. Thank you so much for listening to me today. I know that this particular issue is something that our mayor is well aware of, and I wanted to tell you that it's still going on. When the last thing that I did was yesterday, after I picked up the fire report, which you guys do not have in your hands. Unfortunately, I became ill and was not able to pick that up in time to get it to you. But I do have a copy I can give to the commission if they would like it.
It was very easy for me to find out if the taxes were paid. It was very easy for me to find out who owned the house. All it did was take me walking into the county assessor to get this information. When I went... When I was sent back to code enforcement from a city attorney after six months of waiting, I was asked if I knew who the owner was. Please keep in mind, this was the second conversation I was having with code enforcement. Now, I understand we have a new person in code enforcement, and she needs to get her sea legs underneath her before she gets going here. But I gave her another 45 days and came in and asked her, and they flat out told me they had done nothing. Absolutely nothing. Now, how am I supposed to get that building taken care of if I cannot get my city officials to do what they are supposed to do? And that's all I have to say today. Once again, thank you very much for hearing our plight. Me and my neighbors are done. We need your help. Please. And Mr. Riden has left his seat, but this happens to be in his district. I was going to ask him if he would help you with this, because it's our property values that are dropping, including his. Thank you.
Okay, somebody has to speak to that. Sorry. I need to know what's going on. And I know you were expecting that, so perfect. That's awesome. That's what we like.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Assistant City Manager Hernandez. Yes, and first of all, I'd like to say, when the fire took place, when Ms. Goldberg first started communicating with attorneys, our attorney and our code enforcement, I was not code enforcement manager.
Right.
And Ms. Smith was not our city attorney.
Got that.
But I have definitely researched, and yes, there was a structured fire at that location on December 23 of 21. We do have records. I have multiple photos of the damage to this home. On December 26 of 21, a fire report was submitted by Primary Investigator William Skaggs, who is an employee of the city of Alamogordo. So, he provided everyone with the report, which is on file. We know who the owner of the home is per tax records, county data. We research all that. We have all that information. An IPMC, an International Property Management Code Letter, was sent out to the property owner on January 4 of 2022. It was sent out to the property owner. Unfortunately, there was no one living at the home per county records. That is the only address on record for the property owner. I don't know if this gentleman is deceased or not. I have researched and looked.
Can... Is it... Okay, I know it's Cuba and Greenwood. I'm very familiar with that area. Is it the north side or the south side?
It's on the north. If you're headed down Cuba, right past the church.
Uh-huh.
That's on 16th and Cuba.
Right.
It's just right beyond that to the north, and it's on the corner of Cuba and Greenwood, on the right side of Cuba, on the east side of Cuba.
No, I understand that, but there's two corners there. So, which corner is it? It's the north corner?
Yes. Yes.
Do you know, I used to know the people that lived in that house years ago. Bernard and... I think his wife's name was Margaret. Is that right? He was a pastor. Was that the house? Many years ago?
I've lived there for 17 years. It's the one with the...
It's been longer than that, yeah.
I mean, Mulberry Tree in the front yard.
That makes me so sad. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. That makes me sad.
So, just to continue on with the process that has taken place. So, like I said, January 4 of 2022, an IPMC letter was sent to the property owner. Unfortunately, no one lives in that home, so the letter was returned. Okay? That's the only information we have as far as contact information, owner's name and address. All right? So, here I come, April 1, 2022, and I am code enforcement manager.
Right.
At this point. We have... I had a meeting with Ms. Goldberg and explained the process and explained the budget and how I have no budget left this fiscal year and that nothing would be able to be done. But there is a process, and you, as the commissioner, are well aware. You know, I have to bring a resolution in front of you. If you approve that, then I have to... Well, first of all, I have to apply for a search warrant, get that approved by the judge, go in there and investigate. Not I, but you know, we have people like Mr. Skaggs and then Paul Bennett from Facility that go in there to deem if it is, you know, if we should condemn it, what we should do, blah, you know, all that stuff. My code enforcement officer, Estrado, actually on October 13 of this year, did a notice of violation for the weeds in the alley. I mean, they're pretty tall behind the home and stuff. That came back also.
Because we're sending them to that address?
Yes, because that's the only address. I mean, so now, to let you all know why I am not, at this point, able legally to do anything, the house is in foreclosure. I'm in communication with the law office out of Albuquerque that is handling the foreclosure. You know, they're in the process. They can't find the owner of the home either. They... I had this conversation with them. They don't have... They can't find whether he's deceased or not, like, you know, Mrs. Goldberg is complaining, referring to the fact that he's deceased. So, there's going to be a process there. They're actually... They filed a complaint. The complaint is, and I may pronounce this incorrectly, but it's a notice of less pendants, which is foreclosure. They did that on June 22. Now, because they can't find the property owner, they are going to have to serve him basically per publication. So, they're going to have to put it in the newspaper for three weeks consecutive... I can't say that word right now.
I know what you're trying to say.
Anyway, three weeks in a row, right? And then, there's going to be another process of service, and then they have to get a motion from the judge to say, okay, now we deem it, you know, you can't find him, he's not responding, now you can start, you know, the actual foreclosure process, and the mortgage company will determine whether they come in and rehab the house or tear it down. But I personally, you know, as a representative of the city, I just can't go in and tear people's homes down. I know that's what neighbors want, but, you know, there's a process, and I just can't go and tear somebody's home.
Okay. So... Can I ask our attorney a question? So, I get that it's in foreclosure. Like, I get that. But right now, the mortgage company doesn't technically own it, or they do? Like, which is it?
Right now? Sorry. Right now, it would kind of be like in a limbo, because the mortgage company does not own it until they get that order from the judge saying that, you know, yes, I'm granting your foreclosure, and then it becomes theirs. So, right now, it's kind of like what I'm doing with the lien stuff. I know you guys are aware that we've been doing a lot of foreclosures.
Right.
Process for some of the liens that we've had on properties. Again, it's the exact same kind of process where we have to serve the owner, who we believe is the owner, and we have to do that by searching the records. and we have to do that by searching the records, the county records is what we do as well. Like what they're doing, you know, we have to put it in the newspaper. And so that's what they're, you know, in the process of doing right now. And, you know, and for theirs, it's three weeks consecutive. Ours is a little different, but... Until that process is complete and until the judge rules, well, no one's coming forth, and you do, you know, your complaint or your notice of foreclosure is valid, it's still technically this unknown property owner's place. They still own it.
But how come we can't move... So how come we can't move forward? As if we knew where the owner went, like, why can't we?
Because the bank still has an interest. That's their collateral.
And they trump us?
I mean, honestly, I, just from my experience dealing with properties and things like that, I don't think that there's anything, until the bank takes back ownership, you could probably lean on them to see if they'll do anything. But New Mexico's a judicial foreclosure state, and so it's got the holder of that mortgage currently, whoever it is, has a period to redeem their rights in that mortgage-
Right, yeah, I get that.
Which is still nine months from the point in time when foreclosure takes place. So, I mean, to think that anything will happen with that property in the near future is unfortunate, but...
And you know, you know what makes me the maddest? Is there was a fire there, and... I mean, I don't know for sure, but is it a fairly safe assumption that somebody might have collected insurance money on that? It just infuriates me. It just infuriates me that...
Well, speaking with the law office, they... The gentleman that I'm dealing with, he's hoping that something will be done by July of 2023. And like Commissioner Paul said, you know, until the mortgage actually, you know, goes through the whole foreclosure process, there's something that I can't do and they can't do. You know, until that happens.
Okay.
And at this time, you know, the city did board it up back March of last year. It's safe. There's no trespassing signs. Nobody should be trespassing on that property, whether it's to take pictures or whatever the reason is. Nobody should be going on there. I myself, nor my code enforcement officers, have even been on the property. The pictures we have are from the street. You know, we follow every legal step that we're supposed to.
Right.
As far as the rear yard, I know you all have pictures that Mrs. Goldberg provided to of the rear yard. The only pictures I have of the rear yard are what was provided during the investigation of the fire, because that's another thing. There's a tall block wall and a locked gate in the back, and by law, if I can't see what's in the property by just standing there, then I have no business there. So... But that's the whole, you know, list of events that's happened, and this is where we're at today.
Okay, well, I mean, yeah, it sounds like you're doing everything you can. And I know it's frustrating, but I don't... It doesn't sound like we can do anything else about it.
Now, the law office out of Albuquerque that's handling it, you know, we both have that understanding that as soon as things are happening on their end, they've promised to make me their first point of contact and let me know what's going on, because they do want to work with the city. But until it goes through the foreclosure process, we can't... They can't do anything more than what they're doing at this point, and I can't do anything.
Right, okay. Okay.
Any more questions?
No. Well, does anybody else have any questions? No?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody.
We are going to move on to public comment. I don't have anybody signed up. Okay, I don't have anybody signed up for public comment. So we'll move on to the city manager's report.
I don't have a report, but I just want to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year, because we won't see each other till the new year. And our Christmas tree lighting is this Friday.
This Friday, Christmas tree lighting this Friday, yes. Yes, and just a reminder for everybody that the last commission meeting of the year, we voted to cancel that, so we will not have that meeting. So this is the last meeting. For our regular attenders, this is the last meeting of the year. Okay, all right. Okay, we're going to move on to remarks and inquiries by the city commission. Does anybody have anything?
I do.
Commissioner McDonald.
And this will be brief. I wanted to make a comment about the Dudley School Community Center and Park. If you're driving down Maryland, just drive by slowly and see the sign that they have put up.
The sign looks amazing, yes.
And it is so nice, and the pillars are going to be going up soon. And this Saturday at 9 o'clock, that will be a workday for any volunteers that want to come. We still want to have history. We want the volunteers to come for repair work. So this week, or this Saturday, they'll be prepping walls and painting the interior. There will be some work done outside, but not as much. So, if you can, please come out. And I want to take this opportunity to thank the city of Alamogordo and also the Tularosa Basin Historical Society for all the work that they have done to make this happen. And we are getting a lot of comments, positive, in the sense that they've been waiting for something like this to happen. So, we're pleased, and we just look for you to come out. If you can come out for an hour or so, that's fine. But we will let you know the other dates that we will be working on the school. The second piece is the Sacramento Family Park Playground is coming along very well. They have covers over the playground area. They have just finished the cement and the cover over the seating area. The basketball courts are done, and the... I guess when you replace the nets on there, those are all new, and the blacktop has dried. So, I think they're going to be finished later on this month. So, that is something that is happening in District Number 5, and we are very pleased with the Alamogordo Public School Superintendent and the board that approved that, so that's something else. I was at the Oregon Street Park, where Kids Kingdom is, and also the tennis park, being introduced to pickleball. And I noticed how well-kept that park is. And it was, I just wanted to say to Veronica and her staff, amazing, because I've seen some tennis nets, and they're not as good as that. I said, I was actually pushing up against the nets, and they're strong. So there's a tennis group that is helping out, and they've done an extraordinary job. And Kids Kingdom can be used for older adults too, not just kids. So, I guess we get to be kids twice. The other thing that I attended was the Christmas time on Main Street. And the only reason why I'm mentioning this is because I had my nephew and my niece in town from Pensacola, and they were very much impressed with the activity in the downtown area. And they compared it to their own in Pensacola. So, people that are coming into town are noticing the changes in the area, in the park area. And to Veronica, again, I saw the work at Alameda Park. That's being done, and it's looking good up there too. My final remarks is, there's going to be a parade on Saturday, December the 10th, from 5:30 to 6:30, and there's 45 floats. And I'm passing that on because I got the news also that they were going to have more than 45 at this time. But the parade is going to happen on this Saturday, and that's my list.
Okay. I think they're up to 70 floats now, is what I heard, so... Yes, there is a parade this Saturday. There's a Christmas tree lighting on Friday night. This past weekend, if you missed it, you missed something really cool downtown. They had Old Fashioned Christmas downtown. I spent some time out there. The weather was perfect. Oh my goodness. At least I didn't freeze anyway. It was perfect. And there were, I don't even know, but I know probably a couple thousand people that showed up at different times. And there were vendors out there, and the store owners had their stores open. And we had food trucks out there, and kudos, a big shout out to Alamogordo Main Street for putting that on, of course, with the city of Alamogordo. It was an impressive event. It really was. It always is, but this year, there was... The energy was just different. It was just even better this year. So, that was a great event for our citizens. And then, like I said, there's a Christmas tree lighting. I will be lighting a Christmas tree on Friday night, and I think Commissioner Paul will be... I don't know how they talked you into that, but he's going to be reading the night before Christmas. So, I said, that was really impressive. I don't know how Mayor Pro Tem Wright got out of that and Commissioner Paul got to do that, but super impressive to both of you for opposite reasons. So, anyway, it'll be a lot of fun. It always is, and I'm looking forward to that. And I'm excited because my grandkids will be here, so I'm going to sport them around as well. And I think that is it. Yeah, I think that's it. That's all I have. So, we will move on, unless anybody else has anything. We will move on to the consent agenda. And as I mentioned earlier, Rachel wants to pull Item 5 just for discussion. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to pull off the consent agenda? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 5?
So moved.
Motion from Commissioner Melton. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Burnett. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Commissioner Riordan had to step out. He had a... What I think is a more important event to attend, so... Anyway, so he had to step out. So motion passes 6-0. And we'll move on to the item pulled from the consent agenda, Item 5, and Rachel Hughes has some information on that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just wanted to make one correction, and that's not necessarily to the actual calendar, but that's just to the wording up here on the schedule. So what it needs to read is that the November commission meetings is going to be on the first Wednesday, so it's here, and then it's going to be the second Tuesday. We do have a municipal election on the 7th, and so that while the calendar is right, the wording wasn't correct, because I had put the third Wednesday instead of this... I'm sorry, the third Tuesday instead of the second Tuesday. And that's the only correction I have for that.
Did everybody see that? Okay, perfect. Anybody have any questions? Okay, and does anybody overall have any questions about the calendar? No? Okay, do I have a motion to approve Item 5?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, and motion passes 6-0. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. Item 14. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, Item 14. Consider an act upon award of public works bid number 2022-007 to Mountain Air Heating and Cooling. This is related to replacing an HVAC unit, it looks like, at the Alamogordo Public Library. And Bob Johnson, our engineering manager, has some information on that.
Madam Mayor, members of the commission, the item for you is to award Public Works bid 2022-07 to Mountain Air Heating and Cooling. We'll replace the 40-ton HVAC unit at the Alamogordo Public Library. This is a large unit you see when you first walk up to the front of the library and just look up to your right. It will consist of removing and replacing the 40-ton packaged unit, including disconnection, reconnection of power, gas service, and condensate drain line. We advertised the project on October the 9th and 16th. We opened bids on November the 9th, and we had three bidders. The apparent little bidder, Mountain Air Heating and Cooling, is local. Second little bidder of MGS is also local. And the third bidder, CAC, is out of Albuquerque. That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Pretty straightforward. Okay, do I have a motion to approve Item 14?
So moved.
A motion from Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, and motion passes 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are going to move on to Item 15. Consider an act upon the first publication of ordinance 1664. This is to amend Chapters 5, 17, and 34 of the Alamogordo Code of Ordinances. It's concerning alcohol, and my very favorite thing, cannabis licenses and fees. Did you guys catch that anywhere? Okay, moving on. And Rachel Hughes, our city clerk, has some information on that.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. The city manager wanted this ordinance brought forth as the state regulates the two licenses. However, the information that you see on the background is, on the agenda report, is incorrect. So the correct information is that this ordinance is to remove licenses and fees for alcoholic beverages, thus removing or repealing Chapter 5, which is alcohol, removing cannabis licenses from Chapter 34, which is marijuana, including the fees, and removing the reference to the two license fees in Chapter 17 of Business Regulations and Licenses. Now, there will still be a cannabis business registration, so, I mean, there is still, we will still be able to see how many we do have in the city. There will be, however, no alcohol business registrations, as each place of business already has a business registration. So they either have a restaurant, a convenience business registration, or a grocery store. We will create a business registration for a liquor store, just in case one ever comes back to our city.
Okay.
And I stand for questions.
Okay. So if they already have a business, they will not have to have a separate license, is what you're saying?
That's correct. As far as alcohol, alcohol, there will obviously be no license or registration for it.
Okay, and we're still going to track cannabis?
That's correct, through business registrations.
Right, okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
No.
No? Okay. Well, with that, do I have a motion to approve Item 15?
So moved.
A motion from Commissioner Barnett... Burnett? I don't know where I got Barnett. I know better. Commissioner Barnett, do I have a second? A second from Commissioner McDonald. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Carl Melton.
Aye.
Nick Paul.
Aye.
Stephen Burnett.
Aye.
Sharon McDonald.
Aye.
Dusty Wright.
Aye.
Susan Payne.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. We're going to move on to our last item, Item 16, Appointments to Boards and Committees. We have... Yeah. We have three openings in the Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council. We do have one application from Russell Solano. Is he here tonight? No? Okay. If appointed, this would be his first term. And if nobody has any objections, I'm going to go ahead and appoint him to that position. No? Okay. And then we do have three current vacancies in the Airport Zoning Board, and no applications were received on that. With that, this is our last meeting of the year. So, I would like to take a moment and wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a very blessed New Year. I intend to enjoy this last few weeks of the year, so I'm excited about that. I'm excited about Christmas. I love this time of year. And so, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Okay. Do I have a motion? Nothing? Except for the night before Christmas. Got it, okay. Get on out there and watch them. It's going to be fun. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner... I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Wright. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner McDonald. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And we are adjourned.